I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Village of Bartlett, counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane at 7:10 PM. Please call the roll.
Mike Wearden.
Here.
George Cosio.
Here.
Joe Vano.
Here.
Bob Bacaro.
Here.
Guy Papa.
Here.
Charlie DeVoe.
Here.
And Michelle Sarwis.
Here.
You have before you the minutes from the September 5th meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bob, seconded by George. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
George Cosio.
Yes.
Joe Vano.
Yes.
Bob Bacaro.
Yes.
Guy Papa.
Yes.
Mike Wearden.
Yes.
Michelle Sarwis.
Epstein.
And Charlie DeVoe.
Epstein.
Okay, the item, uh, agenda item tonight is case number 19-02, zoning ordinance, Chapter 4, and also Chapter 9. We have a little fly in the ointment. We're going to have Roberta take over. Do you have the evidence of the mailings, the newspaper article, and the picture of the sign?
Uh, we don't have a picture of the sign. This was a text amendment, but yes, we have the public hearing notice and the certification from the newspaper.
Okay, mark those exhibits A and B. Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, the, as you know, the Transit Oriented Development Plan, or the TOD Plan, was adopted in 2016, and since then, staff has implemented several key recommended strategies in the downtown area. And some of these include the complete streets policy, a 25 mile per hour speed limit on downtown streets. The village was awarded a bike rack grant to provide a bike shelter and additional bike racks in downtown, and then we also received a grant for ADA improvements that will include crosswalks to be implemented in the downtown area. So to continue with our vision in, of the TOD Plan, the village applied for and was once again a recipient of another grant from the RTA consisting of $20,000, which was 100% provided by the RTA, so there was no village money spent. And this was for the development and creation of a downtown zoning overlay district. And the goal of this new district would be to incorporate new walkable, connected, mixed-use developments that would establish a sense of place in the downtown. And this overlay district would amend the current zoning ordinance via a text amendment, which is before you tonight, to create a downtown overlay with the existing underlying zoning designations remaining intact, so the zoning is not changing on anyone's property. So this would just be an overlay on the zoning map, and then these regulations would apply. So unlike conventional zoning, which focuses on land use and the regulation of land uses, a form-based code focuses on the regulation of design and the placement of the building's form, and as well as its form in relation to the street design. It specifically regulates items such as the placement of buildings on a lot and along a street frontage, the building scale, the relationship of buildings to one another, and the relationship between buildings and public spaces, which includes streets. So Leslie Oberholzer of CODA Metrics was the consultant who was contracted by the RTA to draft the new code, and with input from a 12-member steering committee. And this committee included residents of the village, the RTA, key area stakeholders, an elected official, actually, George Cosio was the representative from the Zoning Board of Appeals who sat on the committee, and then staff. It met, we've actually been, had, have been meeting since almost a year ago, and to discuss the proposed overlay district regulations, to collaborate on key decisions, and ultimately to review this interim draft document that's before you tonight. We held an open house back in June to obtain additional input on the document. We had several business owners come to that meeting and provide input, and all seemed very receptive of the document since the zoning classifications were not changing. And with that, we're going to try something new here. We apologize, our consultant has a flat tire, and she is in Milwaukee. So Michael Horsting, thank you very much, with the RTA, has his phone, and she is on the phone, and we're going to try to put this up to the speaker, microphone, because she has a PowerPoint presentation, which we have up on the screen. You have that in your packets, and we're going to try to do this, and Leslie, if you're there.
I am. Does it sound okay?
Yes, actually, you sound great, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate your bearing with me on this, and I apologize profusely, I've never had this happen to me before. I could hear all of Roberta's presentation, and she spoke to the basics before we started on the plan, and, or the code, and the sort of process from the code, and so I'd like to sort of skip forward a little bit to explain the code, kind of walk you through the draft of the code. So on the goals of the overlay slide, which I believe is the third slide in, one of the items that I just want to point out to you is that, yes, as Roberta presented, we use the TOD Plan as our guide for writing this code. There shouldn't be anything new that is unexpected about the overall goals that are expressed through this code. The code is written in a way to aim to result in very predictable development. The idea is that there would be less negotiation between staff and a developer, that it would be clear from the developer's perspective, from staff's perspective, and therefore from city, village officials, as well as residents in the village, what the results from development within this code would be. So to kind of walk you through the table of contents, which is the next slide, it is organized as part of Section 10-9. So we have done a little bit of reorganizing, and it is now in a section with the planned, planned developments and planned residential developments, I believe. And so this would be Article C in Section 10-9, the downtown overlay. Within the overlay, there are seven sections, as you can see from your table of contents. The establishment of the overlay, which I'll go over in just a minute, a little bit about the administration, building regulations, because the overlay is organized by buildings, and then building facade design is Section 4, general site design is Section 5, and then master plan sites, which has very limited application, is Section 6. The last section, definitions and measuring, is intended to give staff a very clear understanding of how to measure all of the requirements within the overlay. So I'm going to kind of walk you through each one of those sections. So in the establishment of the overlay, as, as Roberta was describing, we have applied the overlay to the downtown area on top of the current zoning districts. The overlay does not apply to any single-family or purely residential zoning districts. As you can see from the map on this slide, B1, B3, the existing PDs, and a section of SR6 are the main zoning districts that fall underneath the overlay. So the overlay essentially provides the building's form, setbacks and heights and so on, and the existing zoning districts apply, apply the uses, the allowable uses within the building sites. On the next slide, you'll see a definition of subareas, a regulating plan that takes the whole overlay area and breaks it into building forms. So each one of the subareas has a little bit of a different feel to it. Subarea number one is the downtown core. So this is the area right around the train station that has the sort of tightest, most walkable building forms, the most intense building forms as well. And these are meant to have ground floor retail storefronts, respond to the sidewalk, and have upper story mixes of uses and so on. So those building forms are very consistent with your current town center building. That's the dark purple. The next area is subarea 2, which is on the edges of that downtown core. Subarea 2 is meant to be a transition between the core and the residential and other areas around the TOD area. Within that, there's quite a mix of, of uses that are permitted, and these building types allow, or the building form in this area allows for both storefronts or less than storefront with a little bit more landscape area and a little bit more residential feel around Then the third subarea is the downtown residential, the orange, and this is an area that allows for residential building forms, apartment buildings, and townhouses. Subarea 4, the commercial corridor, exists only along Devan Avenue on the southern edge, and this is meant to respond to the fact that those buildings down there are a little bit more conventional corridor, commercial with uses such as the single-use drugstore and banks and things like that, and then of course you've got the shopping center in that area. You'll see a dashed line around the shopping center site, subarea 4, and subarea 2 with the bank and other buildings in it, and you can see from this key that those are what we call potential master plan sites. Should something happen in those locations, we have some regulations that would apply, but only if those were to redevelop significantly in the future. The next slide, the next couple of slides actually provide for some building form images that we consider to be indicative of each one of those subareas. The steering committee, which was an excellent steering committee, we met several times, and they provided really great feedback. We went back and forth discussing most of these images quite a bit. And so what you can see on the first slide is downtown core. All of these are new construction images meant to kind of convey the type of thing that might happen within the downtown core. Some illustrative, illustrative images, these are not to be used as code, they're just meant to be representative of each one of the subareas and kind of convey a message of this is the type of thing that would be expected. Subarea 2, the downtown edge, you can see has pitched roofs, a little bit more landscape area, it may have smaller scale sections of the buildings. As you can see, the chiropractic office, the new construction is up there on the top as an example. On the next slide, in terms of the illustrative images for subareas, subarea 3, downtown residential, we have some images suggesting townhouses in the top, row houses, and apartment buildings. And then for subarea 4, commercial corridor, it's very consistent with the CVS pharmacy, but we have some other images showing sort of single-use commercial buildings that are also walkable. They're still shopping center-like, but they've been pushed up to the corridor with sidewalks and street trees and outdoor seating and so on, to sort of make them bridge that gap between the kind of auto-oriented accessibility of those types of building forms to mix with the pedestrian orientation of the downtown. On the next slide, in terms of administration and exceptions, this is the section of the code that talks a little bit about the process for approval. We are using the administrative site plan review process that's already defined in Chapter 13 that staff already uses, but we've made a few adjustments to it. One is that we've required a pre-submental conference, so a developer would need to come in and talk with staff so that staff could walk them through, the code is written, and make sure that they understood. We have also not allowed for the planned unit development or the planned development to happen within the downtown overlay area, simply because what we've proposed is quite specific, and also has exception processes, which I'll get into in just a minute, to allow relief from the regulations. And a planned unit development really wouldn't be necessary, but it also might stray too far from the goals of the downtown area. So C and D outline two levels of exceptions or waivers that can be requested from the regulations to provide relief beyond kind of a variance process or hardship variance process. The minor design exceptions are for minor dimensional exceptions to the regulations, small amounts that staff can just approve. Those can be part of the administrative site plan review process. So in other words, if we had a dimension that somebody couldn't meet for two, it was just two or three feet or a small amount, then staff could readily approve it as long as it was consistent with the idea behind and the intent of the regulations. The major design exception, however, would kick it into the sort of full site plan review that you already have on your books, that process that's already on the books that would then be approved by the ZBA. So a developer comes in with meeting much of the regulations or would ask for some very major exceptions throughout that were not dimensional, and it would go through that site plan review and kick it to the ZBA for, for a hearing and approval process. So just to look at the building regulations on the next slide, they are organized in a tabular form, and they are meant to be easy to read, easy to find, all of the regulations on a few pages. They're organized by subarea, so you could see the subarea column across, column headings across the top for 1, 2, 3, and 4. The regulations on the left-hand side, row is a separate line item, with metrics, clear metrics that are easily approved, sort of checked off by staff dimensionally. Section A is building and parking siding, so where the building is located on the site, where the parking is located on the site, for each one of those line items, it's different for each one of the subareas. Section B, that halfway down the page, a little bit more than halfway down the page, is about height. And then C is about how the uses that are in the base zoning district are applied to the building, and it simply means that the ground story is treated a little bit differently from the upper story in some cases. Those regulations are keyed to the diagrams on the next slide, and these diagrams you can see on page 13 of the code. So the building and parking siding on the plans, and then the height and uses on the On the next slide, we have what makes this the most unique in terms of how zoning is typically applied. These are some very basic facade requirements that are meant to improve the pedestrian area within the downtown, so that each development responds to the sidewalk and the pedestrian. These facade requirements include transparency window amounts and entrances, and a little bit on facade divisions, dividing the facade up into smaller increments for the pedestrian walking along a longer facade. These are keyed to the diagrammatic elevations on the next slide on page, and on page 15 within the code. And so you can see the differences between the different subareas in terms of the amounts of glass that are required on the ground floor, the roof types, and so on. The last section is the cap types or the roofs, and we have defined a series of roof typologies that can be applied to the buildings in order to help them all have an actual cap on them, an actual finish to them. We have found that in image preference surveying, that one of the key issues that people have with a lot of modern building construction is that the buildings just sort of end and don't actually, aren't actually capped off. And so we've studied the different metrics associated with those different cap types, and they're illustrated on the next slide, the pitched roof and a flat roof and a parapet roof, which you'll be very familiar with, to you. And then we also have a tower that's illustrated there in Figure 8 on page 17 of the actual code. And that tower allows for an additional story at a very limited footprint on the building, just to give some additional interest to the, the roof line. Section 4 of the code is building design, and one of the key sections of this is about building materials. So we have defined a series of major materials, minor materials, some prohibited materials, and then some detail and accent materials. The steering committee had a lot of discussion about these different materials. We had a lot of great knowledge between staff and some of our steering committee members about the kinds of materials that would be acceptable and that would respond to sort of the character of Bartlett as a whole. So we had a lot of discussion about those. They're illustrated on the next slide with an allowed major facade materials. If you look on page 19 of the code, there's a short table about those, and some illustrations of the types of materials. And then the next slide is a table of minor facade materials. So the major facade materials are very limited in number, but they constitute the majority of the facade, obviously, but then there's quite a bit more variety for minor facade materials to give different character and provide some flexibility in terms of the design of the facades. The prohibited materials is a very short list that was discussed quite a bit with the steering committee. And then allow detailed and accent materials is just giving some clarity to the, some materials that might not be available to be used as facades, but can be used as details. One of the exceptions that's defined in the code is for building materials, so as new building materials come on the market, we've written some, a process for getting those approved, and they would come before the BCA, and you would approve those for use on specific buildings. And then staff could consider whether or not to add them to the code. This section, building design, on the next slide, also talks about balconies, principal entrances, windows. These are some key design elements that you can create a series of very clear metrics so that the buildings can be designed quite easily to address some of those elements that get kind of used inappropriately. The last section of design is Section 5, where you have parking. This is a table of parking requirements that we organized with staff based on the kinds of parking requirements that staff has been negotiating on projects in the past. We also created a series of parking credits and allowed for an alternative solution to be submitted as a major design exception that again would come before you. The last section is major site plans, and as I referred to before, they're keyed on the regulating plan, where they might be located. And again, this is only needed if there's a significant redevelopment or a large site that could be added on. This is a section that defines block sizes that are consistent with the downtown, breaking up large sites into smaller sites if they were to redevelop, and providing some open space within them. It also allows for use of all of the subareas on those sites, so if the site wanted, were to subdivide into smaller areas, then they could use multiple subareas and have a variety of development with on them. So you can see one illustration of something that could be submitted. In the bottom right-hand corner there shows the subarea 4 corridor commercial along Devan, but behind it, subarea 3 residential being introduced. So this is how you could use some of the subareas that aren't currently mapped. I hope this wasn't too painful. That's all I have. If you have questions.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very audible. The, the pictures are very nice, and the handout also. A lot of work has gone into it. Have you, has staff had any phone calls or anything about any of this?
Actually, I think we had one phone call at the town center. We, we had one phone call, they, or actually, they came into the counter and asked a few questions, and we told them what the form code was based upon, and they seemed fine with it. So that was it.
Has there been any, have we been able to receive any comments from any developers on what, what they think of it?
Well, I can give you an example. We had Moore Brewing come in before, obviously, before this code is adopted, and we told them that we had been working on this, and we showed them the code. And when they first came in, they had major materials that were actually prohibited in this code. And when we talked to them about it and asked them if they could change it to try to meet this code, they did, and today, they would meet this code if it was adopted. So they changed their materials to be a much higher quality material. They are now giving us brick, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering if, if developers in general thinks this, you know, think it might be too prescriptive and, and then kind of boxes them into what they have to do. I, I know there's a lot of flexibility in it.
Right, right.
But I was just, you know, if any, if we've had the opportunity to get any, any comments besides Moore Brewing.
Leslie, can you hear me? Is she there? Is she there, Mike?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
In your experience, have you, when you have developers come in to discuss with the form-based code, do you get any kind of pushback? Can you, can you hear me, Leslie? Can you, can you hear me, Leslie?
I think so. You're asking if developers push back against this kind of code?
Or, or do they struggle with following it at all, or do they have any issues with it?
I, no. I think it's, in, in many cases, what's great about this type of code is, first of all, we've written it to adhere to what we consider to be good development around the region. What I have found is that developers are glad to have clear direction and can, can do their drawings once and submit them for approval. So it's much, much easier process for them to understand what's expected of them upfront. The, the types of things that I've gotten pushback from, I've been doing this type of code for a while, we tend to have discussions about. We had discussions about them in the steering committee. And, you know, we decide whether or not those kinds of things that you get the pushback from are valuable enough to retain in the code and, you know, to, to require of developments. So we try to be very reasonable about what the expectation is and to make sure that these are things that can be submitted. I have a couple of examples of other projects that I've worked on that I can just speak to specifically here. I know that in, we did a code very similar to this in Brookfield, and there were a lot of, there was a lot of good feedback from developers that they were interested in working there specifically because they had this type of code and didn't have to submit for a planned development. I've also been working, these are based on other codes that RTA has, has supported. In Highwood, I've been doing some project review for them based on a code that I wrote for them that they've had multiple development proposals based upon, and it's been very, a very easy process to review based on the code, and we've had some excellent projects come through the, through the pipes. So it's been, it's been much easier, I think, than without a specific line, series of line items that are expected. I don't know if that answered the question.
Yes, thank you.
I would agree with what Leslie says, and another example using Moore again, but when, in their petition, they had to ask for a variation request, as you saw last month, for the number of parking spaces. And as I stated, that according to the existing code that we have today would have been 132, 132 spaces required. With this form-based code requirement, it would have been 20. So it drastically would have reduced that variation request. It would have eliminated a couple variation requests. So developers are all on board for that. If they can get through the process faster or get their permit faster, they're going to be in favor of this.
My understanding is correct. I, I look at this, a developer is going to come to Bartlett, and he's going to develop outside of the downtown area. He's going to get a certain packet of information that tells him what our rules, regulations are. Someone comes here and wants to develop in the downtown, they're going to get that same standard package. And this, in addition, which, when the builder goes away with it, he, he looks at this first before he makes any suggestion or, or request to us, and, and that way it speeds up the process because he has a, a general idea of what we want. He can pick and choose, and ultimately, we still did provide a way of if he wants to do something totally different, he can go through the process to appeal and make a request. I think that that's going to speed up the process appreciably.
I would agree.
I think one item that was kind of a shocker at first with Moore Brewery was how much space they were taking on the lot. On Page nine, at the bottom there under 3B, "Up to 10% increase in total impervious coverage, not to exceed the total amounts of permitted impervious plus semi-impervious coverage, compliance with stormwater regulations is required." And we've addressed things like that, for example, with CVS having to have storm water on-site holding because it was a low-lying area before.
I, I don't know if you saw the two sheets that were laying on your, uh, dais there, but we struck that actually. At the Village Board Committee of the Hall meeting, that was brought up, and they thought, we thought we should strike that, so we did. That was one of the changes, and you see the second page.
No, Erin was concerned that that was a high figure.
Yes.
Yes.
And on, on Page 10, we also added, our attorney reviewed this and wanted us to have, or actually, the ZBA to have, conditions and standards for the major exceptions. If they do come before you, that you have something to administer your, you know, ruling or your decision.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for clarifying that. Any other comments before we open it up to the public? Okay, at this moment, I shall open up the hearing to the public. If you have something to say, you may come up to the microphone, fill out one of the sheets so that we don't have to swear you in. Comments from the audience? Any further discussions or motions?
Before a motion, I'd, I'd like to make a compliment to Leslie for the work that was done helping us get to this level of document. There's a lot of work here, high quality, and it, it's amazing, I think, what this is going to offer us going forward. Thank you to Leslie.
Yes, it should expedite things quite a bit because sometimes that's been a problem with delays.
Did you hear that, Leslie?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh.
We were complimenting you for all the work that you did, and, and it's going to help with expediting, expediting things. We made a comment years ago at, at the zoning board level that we would not have any objection to staff being able to do minor approvals instead of making people come before us and wait until the hearing time. So I think this addresses a lot of that.
Leslie, I hope you can hear me. This time it's George. Having sat on the committee, I was impressed by the, the quality of the work that was done by you for us. I, I don't think we could have created a document like this on our own, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask just an off-the-wall question?
Yes.
Why, why was glass block prohibited? And it's on Page 21, under prohibited materials. It's just off-the-wall because my house has glass block. Of course, it's a 90-year-old house, but.
Did you hear that, Leslie? Why is glass block prohibited? Leslie, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can't hear anybody else.
Okay. The question is, why was glass block prohibited?
So glass block is a material that is not sort of typical of the traditional building forms that you have in the Bartlett area. It is often used on the front facades of buildings to let light in, but what it doesn't do is it sort of masks activity on either side of the, of the glass block. So what we're aiming to do here, it's prohibited, I should say, on, on the facade, street facades of the building. It can be used anywhere else on the building. But on the street facades, you want to have that sort of permeability between what's going on inside, you know, to know that there's activity in there from the street and to see what's going, and, and so that the people on the street know that there's activity in the building, but also so that you can see out and see what's going on on the street as well. There's an old sort of planning term, they say eyes on the street, and that sort of permeability of buildings is what helps keep places active and vibrant.
Thank you.
Okay. Valid question? Anything else? Any motions?
I would move to make a positive recommendation to the Village Board to approve. Number 19 dash 02.
19 dash 20?
02.
02? I'm sorry. What was the, the proper number?
19 dash 02, the zoning ordinance, Chapter 4, establishing of zoning districts and Chapter 9 planned unit developments. This is the text and map amendments to the downtown zoning overlay.
It's been moved by George. Any seconds?
Seconded a motion.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? At this point, we shall close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Please call the roll.
Michelle Sarwis? Here. Charlie DeVoe?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Abicaro?
Yes.
Guy Papa?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes.
George Coziel?
Yes.
Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the Village Board. So this should get to pretty fast to the board this month.
It'll go, it'll go back to the Village Board. Let's see, probably in November. I think November. We, we have a deadline of the end of the year, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
So it'll go directly to the board, not a, another committee?
No, I, I think it's going to go to committee first.
To, to the committee of the hall.
November, yes, yes. Thank you, Leslie. And this is Michael Horsting. He's with the RTA. RTA is who gave us the grant to do this, so.
Thank you for your participation.
Right, and it was our pleasure again to work with the Village of Bartlett. We had a great partnership developing the downtown TOD plan a few years ago, and we're very happy to see the activities that are, that Village staff and elected officials are taking to actually implement the plan rather than develop a plan and have it sit on the shelf. So we're, we're very happy as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else under old business, new business?
We have some new members.
Yes.
Yes.
Let's greet them.
Yes.
Thank you for joining the board.
So we have Charlie and Michelle, and we're, and actually, we have a full board. I mean, when was the last time we had a full board?
Remember the last time we had a full board.
Right.
I was actually young then.
Oh, okay. And, and I think, Diane, you set these out on the dais, each, you got one?
Yes, but there's a mustache.
Oh, okay. Well, we handed out, we're gonna.
I'll email you, everybody.
Everybody, the list, a contact list, so each of you have it with names and contact information. We thought you all should have it.
That also is a, a new phenomenon. We haven't had too much of that over the years.
Right, right.
Well, thank you. Yes, I was going to bring that up after I found out if we had anything else coming up for next month, but thank you for joining us. We look forward to working with you.
Yes.
Another new experience.
Yep.
And then, lastly, I just wanted to let you know that this will be coming down the pipeline. The board has asked staff to draft an ordinance amending fence heights on major, are we going to say major arterials? Major arterial streets to allow six-foot fences to come in without variation requests.
I remember that came up at a, a board meeting.
Yes.
Like last month or something.
Right, so we would be amending the code to do that, and we're working on that now, so.
So regardless of backyard, corner, side yard, any configuration would be?
No, not any configuration. What we'll probably do is, and we haven't sat down to go over it yet, but we want to institute what we've been doing all along here as the ZBA recommends, which is pulling a six-foot fence back probably 10 feet off the property line.
I think what started was at, at Lamont Parkway between, at the Bartlett Road and Devon there, the southwest corner, that we just approved that this summer, and everybody liked the idea and said that that probably was a good idea on major thoroughfares.
And it was already pulled off from the set, from the sidewalk, so I think we're going to try to keep that momentum going. That's what this board has always approved when they looked at six-foot-high fences, so staff's going to try to incorporate that.
We didn't like it right up to the sidewalk where somebody could easily be hiding behind there waiting to jump somebody coming along.
Okay, and that's all I have.
Any motions to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by George?
Seconded.
Seconded by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it.